Good evening to you all. It's good to see all of you here this evening for our June 6, 2022 meeting. Before I have the roll call, I would remind us all, and many of you probably don't need reminders, that today in history is D-Day, remembered by many, sometimes referred to as the Battle of Normandy. And so it's proper that we stop and remember many who gave their lives and the cause of this country on that day. We think of that same part of the world today where people are dying as a result of conflict. So remember D-Day, June 6, 78 years ago today. As a call of millions to order, I'll ask the town clerk, if she will, to call the roll.
Mayor Marshburn?
I'm present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Present.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Behringer.
Okay, thank you so very much. And our next order of business, I'll recognize Councilmember Phil Matthews, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and stand if you can. And that will be followed by our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Well, merciful heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day, another day of the gift of life, as we do truly remember June the 6th and all those that sacrificed their lives for the freedoms that we now enjoy. Let us always remember. Be with this town council as we deliberate over issues concerning our community. Guide us in making wise decisions that will benefit everybody within the town of Garner. Lord, be with our country, be with our military, and just thank you again for another day of the gift of life. In your name I pray. Amen.
Thank you so much. Sure enough. I guess I won't be able to call them all by name, but it's a pleasure to see any number of our town, our former town employees, I guess I should say, retired town employees here this evening for a special occasion, and we'll get to that in just a minute. So the first item of business, though, is what we call petitions and comments. This is a portion of the meeting to receive comments from the public on items not included in this agenda. Ideally, if you signed up in advance, the town clerk will have your name, and I'll ask her in a minute if we have anybody signed up. The council is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on subject matter brought up during the petitions and comments segment. However, topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Ms. Clerk, do you have any person signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We still will give folks an opportunity, if you'll be brief, if there's a person here who wanted to come and petition the council on a matter. Is there anyone? Okay, seeing and hearing none, very good. We will proceed. And the next order of business, which I'm sure many of you are here for, is a presentation, and I'm going to recognize Councilmember Singleton, who will make this presentation. Ms. Singleton.
Mayor Council, it's my privilege to read a resolution honoring Mary Lou Todd, longtime town manager, town clerk, longtime employee with the town of Garner. Before I read that, I'll take a moment of personal privilege to talk about the impact Mary Lou had on me. When I was elected, I was only 31 years old, and I was pretty dumb and naive, and some people still think I am. But when I needed to talk to someone, to seek guidance, ask for advice, how's this done, why is this done, why are we arguing about this, why are we not talking about this, I learned to go to talk to Mary Lou and seek advice. And anyone who knew Mary Lou knew she talked in that calm, reassuring voice and explained things. She didn't say you should do this. She said, here's something to think about, or, son, here's something to think about, or, son, you may want to think about it this way. And that reassurance helped me all through the years in working with the town, working with her. Came to an odd when she became town manager, and technically I was her boss, but anyway, we got through all that. But Mary Lou loved Garner. Of course, she went to high school here, grew up here most of her life. She was so active, as it's talked about, the resolutions, the many activities she had throughout our community, and her simple, easy approach to things, common sense, this approach I wish others could follow, especially in Washington DC, but it just doesn't work that way. Because she used, I think a lot of us refer, is common sense. But again, she didn't tell you to do this or do that. She put it out there and said, why don't you think about these things and then decide how you may approach it. Something I'd heard some of my life, but I learned a lot from her, was the phrase, choose your battles wisely, son. First time she told me that, we were at a retreat somewhere, my first or second year, and I was off on a tangent somewhere, and she sat me down and said, look, here's some things to think about. You've got a good point, but you have no support. There's three or four other things in here that everyone supports. Why don't you think about pushing for that, and then maybe bring this other topic up another time down the road. Choose your battles wisely. She told me that several, many times over the years, not just several, but many times. And you learn that as you move forward. But it was that calm, reassuring tone that gave you confidence, and that what she was saying was something to serve, not only the town, but also serve you well as you moved along in life. So Resolution 2022-2493, a resolution honoring Mary Lou Todd. Judy Bass will come up here, because I'm going to give the resolution to Judy, and I hope that this will end up in the museum one day soon. Judy was a longtime town employee. He worked with Mary Lou for over 30 years. Whereas, on behalf of our community, we wish to extend sincere condolences over the passing of Mary Louise Todd on May 14, 2022. Whereas, Mary Lou's death leaves our community with a deep feeling of sorrow for the loss of such an honored and respected citizen and former town employee. Whereas, her career service began as a clerk cashier and progressed quickly to town clerk in 1972, to assistant manager in 1994, and the first female town manager in 2000 until her retirement on August 2, 2006. Whereas, she influenced several major compliments in Garner, including a $25 million bond referendum in November 2000, the Garner Historic Auditorium renovation, the Garner Senior Center renovation, construction of Centennial Park, the purchase of the 96-acre White Deer Park, as well as outstanding financial management and excellent credit agency ratings. Whereas, she served this community in various capacities, too numerous to list, but include in 10 years on the EMS Board of Directors, the YMCA Board of Directors, Chair 2003 to 2004, Board of Directors and Judge for the Miss Garner Pageant Association, Chair of the City County State Public Works Subcommittee, Manager and Charter Member of the Garner Midday Rotary Club in 2000. Whereas, Mary Lou's professional accomplishments included the International Municipal Clerks Quill Award in 2006, and was President of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks from 1999 to 2000, where she represented Garner and North Carolina in her international travels. Whereas, Mary Lou was recognized by the New Zealand Observer as the Tar Hero of the Week on July 30, 2000. She was a recipient of the Paul Harris Fellow from the Rotary Foundation of Rotary International, and received the Triangle Business 2004 Women in Business Award. Whereas, Mary Lou's personal caring touch reaches further than we were able to measure, and her respect and admiration and high regard of all with whom she came in contact, and our community has sustained a great loss in her death, now therefore will be it resolved. We extend our sincere sympathies to her family, friends, and this community upon Mary Lou Todd's passing. Signed by Ken Marshman, attested by our town clerk Stella Gibson. When I read over this this weekend, I thought, seeing Ms. Gibson's name on here, who's our town clerk, how many documents are in Town Hall with Mary Lou Todd's name on it, and also Judy Bass's name on it, and now Stella Gibson's name on it. Ms. Bass, I give you this. I know you have many fond memories of working with Mary Lou, too.
I do, I do. And we are grateful. There are a number of people that I've been in contact with via Facebook and, you know, other different types of emails, whatever. Some of them are here tonight, some of them couldn't be here tonight, but we're grateful for this recognition. She had many friends who missed her over the years since the accident. And this resolution gives a picture of all she did for the town and her community. The one thing I would like to do, and this is just going to take a few minutes, is there were a few comments on the Facebook posting that I just really would like to share with everyone. There are a couple of them just really kind of stood out, and I don't know, only my friends would have seen it, so I just wanted to share this. One of the comments was she was a great mentor and friend, and I know her heart is full to be reunited with Rex. We are all better humans because she was in our lives. And I think a lot of people probably feel that as well. Mary Lou was an exceptional woman and truly loved the great town of Garner, and we all know she did that. She was a friend and a colleague, thankful to have watched her lead with both tenacity and grace. What an incredible, fine person she was, and I love this part, rest in power, rest in power, Mary Lou. Such a smart lady and always kind, helpful and generous with her knowledge of all things Garner. Anyway, there were just a few things that were posted that I thought kind of stood out in my mind that I wanted to share with everyone. And again, we thank you, the town and the council, for giving the opportunity to make this happen.
Thank you. I think it would be appropriate to just maybe give a round of applause as it relates to her. Thank you so much, Ms. Singleton. And I would say, on behalf of the mayor, while I did not work directly with Mary Lou, she was a little before my time before I was elected to the council, but I had a chance to know her personally and socially, and all the things that I've heard about her over the years, and certainly those things that have been said here this evening ring true in my mind. She was sort of one of those special pavers, I guess you'd say, of the path for many others, and she was always a kindly, gentle person from my perspective, even though she did her job and she did it well. So I'm proud that I'm part of a town that she helped shape many years ago through her many skills and talents and her efforts. Councilmembers, I know some of you perhaps didn't know her, as I didn't know her so well, but I'll give you an opportunity if you want to make a few comments, starting with Ms. Behringer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have the privilege of serving under her during my first term on the town council, and I would echo what Mr. Singleton said. She had a very mild manner and an easy way of letting you know what you should consider without making you feel silly that you didn't figure it out by yourself. And so she was, she's sorely missed and a great influence on all of us.
I recognize Phil, who I think did work with her some.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. She was a very special lady, and I had the privilege, back in those days, we're called aldermen. And so I met her, she was a clerk, and kind of like Grace, I sat down with her, and she got me kind of indoctrinated in what was expected of me. And then after, I was very pleased that she became the town manager, because I truly did encourage her to do that, because I thought that was what a great way to bring your career right to the top there. And she did a fabulous job with that. And she always said, you might want to think about this, or you might want to think about this or that, and fill it out before you open your mouth, which sometimes I have a problem. But anyhow, she was a great lady, and she took me for riding her, I call it the Mary Lou Mobile, it was that little car she had, flying through town one day and took me home. But one picture she had in her office, I don't know where it's at, but it'd be very apropos, Judy, if you can get your hands hold to it. It had a picture from one of the local papers we had at that time, it said, Hello, Mary Lou, and had a picture of it on the front page, and a write-up on it, and it was framed. She had it behind her desk when she was a town manager. So we're going to miss her. She was a special lady, and I'm a better person for knowing her. Thank you.
I can't help but mention, when you say that, I think that was quite a popular song by the Everly Brothers. Anybody else remember that? Hello, Mary Lou? I see one head shaking out there.
That's Ricky Nelson.
Was it Ricky Nelson?
Ricky Nelson.
All right. I'm correcting. It's a nice song, though. Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
No, Mary Lou, but it's an envious record of service, and I'm privileged to be up here and try to continue that.
Yeah.
I did not have the pleasure of working directly with Ms. Mary Lou, but I will say that at the times I did talk with her, what had been stated so far is a clear example of who she was, cool-headed person, and definitely was in control. And I can sense that the wisdom that was there, just by the way she handled the various situations that we discussed briefly. So yes, I think this would be fitting recognition for her at this time.
Very much.
I want to add one other thing.
Go ahead.
We mentioned she married Rex Todd, who was another longtime Garner employee that many people out here I'm seeing all worked with and knew. And it's interesting that Mary Lou and Rex got married in the GPAC. For those of us who remember that, they got married at the auditorium, because they both loved it. Rex did a lot, along with some other people, to save the school and so forth and auditorium. And as a matter of fact, he was the one who really saved it at the end, because the town council walked away from the deal the county had, and Rex is the one who rounded this back up and said, let's consider looking at this another way. And so they both loved the old part of Garner, the historical part of Garner, they loved the auditorium, and that's why they chose to get married there. I wish all that was pretty neat. I don't know how many other weddings they've had there, but I know they've had at least one.
Nice piece of history. I'm going to go out on a limb just a little bit here. We have a busy schedule this evening, but I know there are any number of you here who knew her well. Give an opportunity maybe to two or three persons who may want to come to the podium and share any sentiments or thoughts you have about her, if there's some ex-employees or others who might would like to do that. Are there any? You don't have to be bashful, we are all home folks, as they say. Okay. Okay, well, thank, yeah, yeah, Rodney, excuse me. I should have recognized you earlier, sir.
Yes, Mayor, Town Council, yeah, I'll speak on behalf of the town employees. The town employees love Mary Lou. She was a hugger. So, you know, anytime she greeted you, a lot of times she greeted you with a hug. I'm not a hugger. But she, I think I was the last, I think I was the last department head she hired. So she does hold a special place in my heart, because she took a chance on me when I was just, you know, a young lad out of grad school, didn't know anything, you know, had read all the books and everything, but, you know, you know, when you get here and find out things are a little different, they don't teach you everything in grad school. So I learned a lot from her. What really impressed me was her confidence when she was speaking to developers, or she was around other groups of town managers. And as we all know, you know, Mary Lou did not have an MPA, Public Administration, and all those higher degrees, but she learned, and she got her degree from working on the job, and all the different experiences that she went through. So we're forever grateful for having her as a manager and all the things she did for us while she was here. She called me sport. She called you son, but she called me sport, and Judy would always get a kick out of it. So I knew it was a term of endearment, and up until, I think, last, up until this year, she would always either call me or send me a text on my birthday. So, and she didn't this year, so I kind of maybe figured something was maybe not going so well. But anyway, she will ever, forever hold a special place in my heart for giving me a chance to be here where I am now. So.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. Anybody else? Okay, well, this has been a fitting remembrance, and Judy, thank you for receiving the resolution, and we'll look forward to incorporating that into our museum, our history. Such an important part that she had in that. So we're very proud and pleased. Okay, we must move on to the rest of our agenda. And so at this point in time, and I know several of you came for this purpose, so if you want to exit now quietly, that'll be a good idea. So the next item is the adoption of the agenda, council. So is there a motion of that effect?
I'll move, second.
Okay. Motion is properly made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Are there any opposition? And there is none. We next have the consent agenda. There are seven items on the consent agenda. I'm sure you've had a chance to review those, unless any council member desires to give further attention or pull one of those items, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So move?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews and Ms. Singleton. So the motion made and properly seconded. All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition? No. And consent agenda is approved as well. So thank you very much. Okay, we will now move into public hearings, and I see Mr. Banford's already at the podium, I was going to recognize him, who is going to lead us through several of these. And so, Mr. Banford, I will gavel this public hearing to clear it open, and I'll recognize you, sir. Do I need to swear in here?
Mayor and members of council, we got five annexation of public hearings tonight. The first case is Annexation 22-01, and I'll just note that all of these annexation petitions are related to connections to public water and sewer. So the first project tonight is Greenfield 27, and this was a special use permit, 21-04, that was approved back on January the 3rd for industrial warehouse flex space for 160,380 square feet. And this site is located the northwest corner of South Greenfield Parkway and Waterfield Drive. And this project will connect to public water and sewer, so annexation petition is required. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. And the total annexed area for this case is 25.93 acres, and does include a small portion of right-of-way that would connect to the annexed area across the street. So I will stop there and answer any questions you may have.
Okay, council, I won't necessarily go all the way around, but if any council member has a question you'd like to ask of Mr. Banford, please let it be known at this time. Okay, hearing none. I'm supposing that you're the only one making a presentation on this matter? Is that correct, Mr. Banford?
That's correct. This is a public hearing, but I'm not aware that the applicants are here tonight for any of them.
Okay, all right. Okay, so hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close this public hearing and call for a motion for council. You see the consideration of the ordinance that is mentioned there.
I move we adopt ordinance 2022-5121.
Second.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. No further discussion. All in favor of adopting this ordinance, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition? No, and there is none. Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Banford, you're still up. I'll open this public hearing.
So this next case is Annexation Case 22-02, and this is in the same general vicinity. This is, I guess, on the southeast corner of South Greenfield Parkway and Waterfield Drive. And this is a small tract, 1.1, 1.99 acres. And this is related to a special use permit, SUP SP 20-07, which was approved in October 2020 for industrial warehouse flex space for 58,000 square feet. And so the project is moving forward with the building permit, and so that would trigger the time to file for annexation, and that's what they've done. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions on this, on this hearing? Okay, hearing none. Motion would be in order.
I move that we adopt ordinance 2022-5122.
Second.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none, and it is so ordered. Thank you. Close that public hearing. Okay, Mr. Banford, I will open the next public hearing. Recognize you again, sir.
This is Annexation Case 22-03, and this is directly next to the previous case. This is for 200 Lawrence Field Court, and this is at the southeast corner of South Greenfield Parkway and Waterfield Drive. And this is, this site, this was a site plan, this was SP 21-06 for industrial warehouse flex space at 96,000 square feet. And it's back on June the 28th, 2021, and this development will connect to public water and sewer as well. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council, Mr. Banford. Hearing seeing none, motion is in order.
Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance 2022-5123.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
And vote no if there's any opposition, and there is none. And so it is so ordered and approved. Close that public hearing and open the next one, Mr. Banford.
This is Annexation Case 22-04, and the address is 300 Waterfield Ridge Place. Area is 3.02 acres. This is next to the dealership off of South Greenfield Parkway and Waterfield Ridge Place. And for this particular site, there was a site plan approved, SP 21-03, which was also approved on June 28, 2021, for a vehicle truck maintenance and repair center at 9,130 square feet. And again, this is, will connect to public water and sewer. And again, this is, will connect to public water and sewer. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Council, questions for Mr. Banford on this annexation? Hearing none. Motion is in order on this petition?
Mayor, I move, excuse me, approve ordinance 2022-5124.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion properly made and seconded. All in favor, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
Opposition, no. And there is none. All right, thank you. Close that public hearing and open the next one. Mr. Banford again.
This is Annexation Case 22-09. The address is 81 Rupert Road. The annexed area is approximately one acre. This is for a development. It was for a site plan, SP 18-09M for modification. I believe they, this was an expansion where they had one building and added a new building. This was approved back on March the 11th, 2019. And they now have moved forward with the building permit. And this will connect to public water and sewer. I'll be happy to answer any questions on this case.
Questions for Mr. Banford, Council? Okay, hearing none. Got to get a motion on this annexation as well.
Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance 2022-5125.
Second.
You, motion properly made and seconded. There's no discussion. Ask you to vote. If you're in favor, would you vote aye?
Aye.
There's opposition, no. And there is none. So does that satisfy your requirements for now, Mr. Banford?
We have completed all five of those annexation public hearings.
Thank you so much for your, excuse me, for your presentation there. Okay. The next item that comes before us is a quasi-judicial hearing. And so before I introduce presenter here, let me explain to you what that means. Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing and an impartial decision maker. So I must ask council members if any of you have a fixed opinion prior to this hearing that is not subject to change? Or have you had any ex parte communications? Do you have any close familial business or other associational relationship with an affected person? Or have a financial interest in the outcome? If any of those apply, would you so indicate that at this time? Seeing and hearing none. This is a fact-finding hearing and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. Council members are only allowed to receive factual information during this hearing and are not allowed to discuss the case outside of the hearing. And so at this time, if you expect to give testimony in this case, I will ask you, if you will, to see or go back to the town clerk's location and to be sworn in as a witness. So those of you who expect to testify, would you do that at this time? They'll be ready in just a minute. I haven't yet figured out a good way to fill the sound gap here. Start in just a moment. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Okay, so to, to begin this hearing, I will recognize Ms. Jones with the Planning Department and officially open the hearing. Ms. Jones?
Good evening. The microphone is short and changed different positions since last time I've been in here.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, we got a slight delay in getting file up for this case.
Would it be possible to go to the next item if that's ready? If this, we'll perhaps make better use of our time to do that. What do you think? Okay, we'll, we'll wait till they're ready. And I will recognize at this time, Mr. Reginald Bowie, Senior Planner for an item under New and Old Business. Mr. Bowie?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Tonight I'm going to go through conditional zoning amendment CZ 21-13, 709 Clifford Road. The applicant is Mr. Shujah Ali on behalf of SASA Development. Property is owned by Teresa D. Coleman. This is a Tier One Conditional Res zoning request from R40 to R9 C254. Here you have an aerial site, aerial photo of the location on Clifford Road. Here of the location. Property surrounded by R9, predominantly R9 zoning and one vacant lot, R20. Site contains one single-family home and is on R40. In your package, you have all the proposed conditions, but some have changed or have been updated since the last meeting. And I will just go through those. Number seven, each house must have a masonry foundation with crawl space, not including the garage, turned-down slab or stem wall, slab foundation with a minimum height of, of 12 inches with brick or stone veneer on the front and sides. Community information. The neighborhood meeting was conducted on January 5th, 2022 at the Garner Senior Center with six persons in attendance. And more information is in your staff report. This request has been found to be consistent with the 2018 Garner Forward Plan. It is also found to be consistent with the 2010-2018 Garner Transportation Plan. Also found to be consistent with the Parks, Recreation, Greenways and Cultural Resources Master Plan. Their meeting, the planning commission unanimously found that the request, the request to res on the property from single-family R40 to single-family residential, conditional R9, C254 is consistent with these plans. In addition to approving a statement regarding plan consistency upon advice of the planning commission, the town council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. And of course, you could use the 2018 Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. Other adopted plans and policy providing guidance on parks, greenways and cultural resources may be sources of information as well. Staff support CZ 21-13 as presented and reflected in Section 3 of this report and recommends town council approval of the planning commission's statement of consistency outlined in Section 5 of this report. And we have a worksheet, a motion worksheet. We have found that CZ 21-13, 1709 Clifford Road is consistent and reasonable. I believe the applicant is here to speak on behalf of his application. Are there any questions for me at this time?
Okay, yeah, let me see if Council has questions. I'll start on my right with Mr. Vance, if he has a question for you.
At this time.
Behringer? Okay, Ms. Singleton?
One question, Mr. Bowie. The minimum lot size is 9,000 square feet. Roughly, how many single-family homes could be put on this area?
The applicant, I think he'll be able to speak to this, but he limited to 14.
Okay, Mr. Matthews, anything? Okay. There are no other questions from Council for Mr. Bowie. I'll hear from either Mr. Banford or the applicant. Okay, yeah, please, come on.
The 14 lot limit was an original condition, and that has since been removed. F estimates between 14 to 17 lots, based on our estimates. If you take the total acreage, I think 5.16, and take off roughly 30% for open space and right-of-way, by that by 9,000 square feet, that comes, that comes out to around 16 lots. So that that the density of between, I think, 2.3 to about
So does the applicant desire to present to Council on this matter?
Yes, and good evening, Mayor Morseburn, Mayor Proton Vance, and members of the Town Council. My name is Neil Gosh. I'm an attorney at the Morningstar Law Group at 700 West Main Street in Durham. And tonight I'm representing SASA Development. Mr. Shujah Ali is the owner of SASA Development. He's with here, he's with me here tonight as well. This case previously came before you all in April, and we went to the planning commission last month. I think the only change since then came at the request of the planning commission. Previously, we had a condition which required that any exposed portion of any foundation 12 inches in height or more be clad in brick or stone veneer. We now are requiring every foundation to be more than 12 inches in height. So they all will have brick or stone veneer, and we think that makes for a nicer product. We've been really pleased with this project. We've tried to accommodate every piece of feedback from staff, from you all, from the planning commission. We are happy to receive, we were happy to receive both staff support and a unanimous recommendation of approval from the planning commission. And obviously, we hope to have your support tonight. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have. But I know it's a long agenda. I don't want to take up more of your time unnecessarily. So I'll just step back and be available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yeah, don't go anywhere just yet. Council questions for this, for this presenter? Start with down here, anybody? Okay, Ms. Behringer? Okay, Mr. Delger, anything? Okay. All right, thank you very much. Sure enough, okay. Was there anybody else for the applicant who wished to testify at this time? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Okay, no one else, so we're ready to take action on this matter, I believe, Council. Is there, is there a motion in regards to the ordinance?
First, may I move that the town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment requested with adopted land use plans detailed in Section 5 of the report and find the, find the request inconsistent due to the inconsistency with the Garner Forward Plan. Yet also, I move the town council adopt ordinance number 2022. Am I the right one? Miss one? I'm the right one?
Yes, I think so.
I corrected. I'm on the wrong one. This is Chembra Drive, correct?
No.
This is Clifford Road.
Clifford Road.
I stand corrected.
Okay.
Clifford Drive.
Okay.
Correct, someone please pick that one up, please? Pull back this motion?
Okay. Another council member would pick up on the motion at this time? Would be proper?
Mayor, I move that the town council accept planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in Section 5 of the staff report as our own. A further move that the town council adopt ordinance 2022-5126, approving the rezoning CZ-21-13. His request is reasonable and in the public interest because it will likely be of an overall design that keeps within the town's character and improves property values and mixed housing types in infill areas with harming, harmony with adjoining older neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton, and seconded by Councilmember Behringer. Any other discussion, council members? Okay, hearing none. If you favor the motion as presented, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, no. And it is approved and so ordered. I being, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you. All right, we appreciate your time. I'd be inclined at this point, I guess, to go back and pick up back on the agenda where we were before, for the sake of time. So, Mr. Bowie, if you don't mind standing aside, we'll go back to our, to our public hearing. I'll recognize Ms. Jones again and open, open the hearing.
Sorry for the delay the first time around. I am here to present the special use permit.
I am here to present the special use permit for Crazy X, SUP SP-2205. In the staff report, it was noted that this is not a typical SUP, which we normally see. I think sometime last year, I came before you with a similar one for, as the Oak City Academy was going in at the existing Methodist Church right here in the corner. So it's similar. The existing use is already operating, however, the zoning conditions require them to come before you to grant the outside operations. Applicant is Mr. Don Ingresneo. I'm sorry if I pronounced your last name wrong. The owner is 8401 Michigan Road LLC. They're located at 1531 Garner Station Boulevard. The tract size is roughly 16.62 acres in size. As I've already stated, they are expanding their existing business to use the outside Acreage is 16.2 acres, as I already mentioned. The proposed use is not a religious institution. It is going to be outdoor entertainment. The minimum lot size for service business is 6,000 square feet in area. The setbacks are 35 feet for the front. The rear is 025, side is 025, and corner is 35 feet as well. Already stated, this is an existing building, so that stuff doesn't really matter. Neighborhood meeting information. Staff identified 22 owners that were within the notification radius and provided a list to the applicant to mail out notices to. The neighborhood meeting was held on May 13th. There were no one in it. And the list of invitees were in your staff report, in your packet. And this is the overall picture of the outside area that planned... Open space required for this project as this is non-residential. Site plan conformity with the Unified Development Ordinance. After sufficient review and planned revision, staff finds this project is in compliance with the applicable standards of the Garner Town UDO. Page 122 of your packet for the worksheet. And you have any questions for staff?
Okay, yeah, thank you, Ms. Jones. Questions for Ms. Jones, council members? Start with Ms. Behringer, perhaps. Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Matthews? Mr. Dellinger? Okay, Mr. Vance? All right, I believe the, does the applicant wish to give testimony in this case?
They're here, but they, I don't think they want to, but they can. Y'all have any questions?
Only if it's necessary if there are questions, is that it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Are there any of the applicant that council is interested in hearing from? Mr. Dellinger?
I'd like to know about your business and what you do. It's good that you have small businesses, and so I'm curious as to...
While you're thinking about that, and I'm not being a smart one, I was just wondering how you got the name of your business, so maybe you could tell us that. Yeah, go right ahead.
Indeed, so well, thank you, council, for entertaining us this evening, and thank you for all the staff for getting us to this point. It's certainly been a learning journey for us. While that's a 16-acre parcel, you'll recognize it as the old Walmart building. We're actually the tenant on the end cap renting 4,000 square feet next door to Gabe's or behind Goodberry's. So our specific on the 16 acres is literally the 4,000 square feet. It spills out to a large outdoor patio that used to be the garden center for Walmart, and that's really that at the greenhouse that is the spaces that we're entertaining. My brother's here with me. He's my partner. My wife is not here, as she had a previous engagement tonight. This is a space we've looked at for three years. One thing we learned in COVID is that our other location up on Capitol Boulevard had to close entirely for six months, and as small business people, it was a very difficult time. So my brother sought this place out all through COVID because it did have this outdoor aspect to it, that God forbid anything happened again and businesses require to shut down their indoor operations. It gave us the flexibility to go outside. Crazy X is an axe-throwing venue. It's exactly what it sounds like. We welcome ages eight and up. Birthday cakes are our number-one food served on-site. We do three-generation birthday parties almost every weekend. How we got the idea is really, we were traveling out of state, went to another venue, saw how much fun it was, and wanted to bring that here to Garner. 90% of our bookings are done by women. Over 50% of our crowd at any time is female. So perhaps a very different idea, very different crowd, very different activity than what you might be thinking. The lanes booked on a per-hour basis. We cater to families as well as to corporations, and we're finding that many of the Garner businesses, since we've only been there five months, have already booked their second and third time back with us as people are returning to the office and looking to rebuild that employee engagement. We find that we've been a valuable ally to them in terms of being able to do it. How we got the name Crazy X is really hard to say. Some would say Crazy X, and we said, no, we don't have that. But it's just a crazy-good timer, that's crazy, or that type of thing. We've now got, at our primary location, over 1,000 five-star reviews. And in Garner, in five short months, we just broke our 100th five-star review here in our new location.
Thank you.
Would you please identify yourself by name and address for the record?
Yes, Don Ingresano, and it was 1531 Garner Station Boulevard.
Thank you, yeah, that's a necessary information that we need. Thank you. Okay, well, yeah, thank you for answering my question, and I guess Mr. Dellinger's question also, and we wish you well, but let's see, I guess we need to see if council has any questions of you at this time. Are there any? All right, hearing none. Thank you very much again. Does council desire to hear from anyone else? I think he said his brother's out there, and maybe that's the only other person with him. Okay. All right, anything else from you, Ms. Jones? Okay. Council, I believe at this time, a motion is in order. Excuse me, I'll close the...
Mr. Mayor, can you just confirm that there's no members of the public who wish to speak on this?
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Jones. Yeah, are there members of the public who desire to speak on this matter? So public hearing. Okay, hearing none? Now I can officially close the hearing, I guess, yeah, for sure. Okay. All right, council, a motion is in order at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to find the application SUP SP-22-05 meets the town's eight criteria and for special use permits is identified in Article 3.9.2D as in Delta. Therefore, I move that the town council approve SUP SP-22-05 Crazy X with permit that will be prepared by staff.
Okay, thank you. Motion made by Mr. Matthews and seconded by Mr. Vance. So council, if you favor the motion before you, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, no. And there is none? So congratulations, gentlemen. This matter is official now, so we wish you well.
I can't wait to go out there and throw an ax. It's just shocking that more women throw axes. I don't know if the police department was aware of all of this, but...
Since you're elected official, Mr. Matthews, you might want to make sure you know what crowds have before you go.
Yes, you gotta break it.
Make sure you know who the people in the party are.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Budget season is here again.
Okay, enough of that, but at any rate, thank you for coming in, sure enough. All right. We are now to item two under New and Old Business, I believe I've kept up properly. And so I'm going to recognize again Mr. Bowie, the Planning Department.
Good evening to Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I will briefly go through conditional zoning amendment CZ-22-03 Timber Drive. The applicant is Raleigh North Development, owned by Thompson Investment Company, and the tract size is 16.78 acres. This is a tier-one request to rezonate from R-20 to O-N-I-C-256 Conditional District. Here we have an aerial photo of the site along Timber Drive, and a street view of the location, and it will be on to your left in the photo. The service zoning districts around the site, R-9, R-12, and community retail. The site is vacant, and it's on R-20. Since our last meeting, some of the proposed uses have changed, well, conditions have changed, and I've highlighted those, and I'll go through those for you. Number three, no vinyl siding will be used on end-of-the-time home exteriors. Number five, each town home unit will be oriented so that the rear facade faces Timber Drive. Will include the following treatments on the rear facade. A, at least one, two-foot horizontal offset per every two units. And B, at least one roofline articulation for every two units. Seven, D, any units may have a covered side entry instead of a covered front entry. Number 15, each town home group shall have, shall not have more than six town home units. You can see the 50-foot buffer on the site, and it property does have flood zone, which is going to limit the amount of area that can be developed. Neighborhood meeting. The neighborhood meeting was held on February 17th, 2022, at Avery Street Recreation Center at 125 Avery Street with two persons in attendance. Consistency of the request. The plan has been found to be inconsistent with the 2018 Garner Forward Plan. Even though the town homes are recommended in this zoning district, the proposed zoning conditions have a provision that development will not exceed five units per acre. This request is also, has been found to be consistent with the Swift Creek Land Management On the vote 7 to 0, the planning commission finds the request to rezonate approximately 16.78 acres. From R-20 to O-N-I-C-256 Conditional is consistent with the Swift Creek Land Management Plan, while it is partly inconsistent with the 2018 Garner Forward Plan, high designation of high-density residential, and recommends approval. In addition to approving a statement regarding plan consistency, upon advice of the planning commission, the town council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision.
Do you have a question? Is that, can you go back one slide? Is that backwards? One more. Planning Commission... Backwards, right?
No, he's rezoning, he requested to rezonate to O-N-I-C-256.
What was your concern, Mr. Dellinger?
Dellinger, I believe there was a situation where originally there was thought to be a concern about the height limitation that was in the residential zoning, and one of the reasons, I believe, to move to the O-N-I zoning was to eliminate any potential height restriction. I think I'm on the right case.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Recommendation, staff support CZ-22-03 as presented and reflected in Section 3 of this report. Recommend town council approval of the planning commission's statement of consistency outlined in Section 5 of this report, and further recommends approval of the zoning amendment request as a reasonable one. Our zoning amendment worksheet, we find it to be inconsistent, yet reasonable.
Okay, you ready for questions?
I am, and the applicant is here to speak on behalf of his application.
Okay, council, we'll start with Mr. Bowie. You have questions for him at this time? Are there any over here?
I should know, when it came before us the first time, the kind of extension of Nichols Drive or completing it, and it was, what kind of conversations has there been with staff on potential site plans and how whatever gets developed there will align to whatever that improvement would be, and to what extent that extension would be finished, either on just one side, or what have, what's, what have the conversations been around that future road?
I think the applicant can best answer that question. Now, if this rezoning gets approved, they will have to come back in for a full site plan subdivision approval at staff level, and we have had a pre-development meeting for them to get information from us to move forward, and there has been feedback from staff. But I'll let our engineering department or the applicant kind of get more into that. But that's not part of that request tonight. That'll be something that'll be looked at during the site plan process.
I guess there are a question for staff. Are you all satisfied with the direction that's going?
We are.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Good. Vance?
Questions?
Okay, all right. Okay, is anybody else desiring to testify in this matter? Only if there are questions, right? Or go right ahead. Please state your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Phil Layton. I'm with Raleigh North Development, located 5,003 Falls in Neuse Road, Raleigh. Yeah, I want to thank the council members for their feedback and comments at our previous two council meetings, and I want to thank David Manford and planning staff for their comments and feedback as they guided us through our conditions. We had to revise these conditions several times to accommodate the concerns that the council members had, and we feel like that we have made a lot of progress in that, and we look forward to moving forward with this project with these new revised conditions, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Layton. And we appreciate your efforts to make some modifications. Council, any questions for Mr. Layton? Anybody? Guess there are none, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, anybody else? Council, let's see, Mr. Bowie, you don't have anything else from your department, right? Okay? So I believe a motion is in order at this time in regards to this matter?
Mr. Mayor, I think I got the right one this time.
Okay.
I move that the town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in Section 5 of the staff report and find the request inconsistent due to partial, inconsistent due to inconsistency with the Garner Forward Plan, yet I also move that the town council adopt ordinance number 2022-5127, approving rezoning CZ-22-03, as the request is still reasonable and in the public interest because it will likely be... likely be of an overall design that keeps within the town's character, improve property values, mix housing types, infield areas in harmony with the adjacent and older neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, counsel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to vote against this. I just have concerns about, I stated before, about Timber Drive becoming Townhouse Drive. Also, Mr. Treesenberg was kind enough to show me some elevations on what a three-story proposed townhome may be on this property. I just have a lot of concern about people who are traveling from east to west and seeing those three-story units there. I just really worry about what it's going to look like.
Okay, sir. Anybody else? Okay, the motion is properly before this, counsel, for action. So if you are in favor of the motion as presented, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, vote no.
No.
Okay, chair will declare that the motion passes on a vote of four to one in favor. So it is so ordered. And gentlemen, thank you for your time and work with us on this. I wish you well in the project, okay? Next is a matter regarding traffic calming issues relating to the Hunter's Mark subdivision. And I believe our town engineer, Mr. Chris Johnson, is here to make a presentation.
Power point in the bottom. Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Yes, this item is in response to a traffic calming application that was submitted back in March by Hunter's Mark neighborhood. So a quick brief agenda, we'll talk about the work that's been completed today, give you a brief background on the traffic study that was performed and the design that was put together and recommended by the engineering department, and talk to you about the neighborhood outreach that was performed by the neighborhood, and then options for funding and the potential of adding this to the annual resurfacing contract. Give you the final recommendations and next steps. So the HOA for Hunter's Mark submitted this request in March. Engineering department performed a traffic study in April and finalized a design that we provided to the HOA, and they took out to the neighborhood earlier last month. And then the HOA board voted in mid-May to approve the traffic calming project as submitted by staff. And then that brings us to today for the Town Council presentation. So just a brief background, this is for Hunter's Mark, located off of Jones Sausage Road, directly across from the Amazon Center. We had kind of looked at this in two sections. They submitted this request for Hay River Street, which is the main spine road that kind of runs through the neighborhood and is used by most residents for the ingress and egress to and from their homes. We kind of split up the studies and did a couple different studies. We're primarily looking at the area between Calabar and Watkins Valley as section one, and then north of Watkins Valley as section two. So we performed three studies. First was in the first block of section one. This section passed, as you, as you can remember, our criteria thresholds for collectors is to have a greater than 900 vehicles per day, as well as an 85, 85th percentile speed of greater than or equal to eight miles over the speed limit. Speed limit out there is 25 miles an hour, which would mean greater than or equal to 33 miles an hour during the study for the 85th percentile speed. So that first block did pass on both speed and volume. We performed two other speed studies in section two, just past Watkins Valley Road, and neither of them passed. The only reason that we did two different studies was just because the first one we felt may have been a little too close to the Watkins Valley intersection. So we performed a second one a little further north at the, at the bottom of a hill, which would kind of provide a worst-case scenario. So just kind of showed you the area in green, that was the, the blocks that we felt passed the study. Once you get further north into the, the neighborhood, you've got more horizontal alignment that kind of provides a more natural traffic calming element. So those, those areas did not tend to meet. So based on the street type classification, staff's recommending our tier-two measures, which is speed tables for Hay River, Hay River Street. Engineering put together a design. We typically like to put speed tables approximately four to 500 feet apart to try to maintain low speeds. This was about 1,600-foot long corridor, so we recommended a total of four speed tables. That kind of just put the, the fourth speed table being right there near the intersection of Watkins Valley, based on the terrain and the intersections and that little eyebrow cul-de-sac that's kind of right directly across from Watkins Valley Road intersection, right in this area. We were kind of left to decide, do we put the last table here or the last table here? And we felt like, given the terrain, as you enter that last curve you're heading downhill, we felt it was better to put that last table just after the intersection rather than right So just for the neighborhood outreach, this is a requirement when applications are submitted by HOAs per the traffic calming policy. The HOA board did some neighborhood outreach. They sent out a neighborhood email blast on May 10th. They also posted the same information that we provided to them on the Facebook page. They've received minimal, minimal but limited, limited but supportive feedback. When I spoke to the HOA president last week, they still had said, said they had not received any negative feedback about this project. But the Hunter's Mark HOA board had a virtual meeting on May 14th and voting unanimously to approve the project. So as you know, the town does not currently have a dedicated funding source for traffic calming. We do have the current 2022 resurfacing contract in progress. It's about 55% complete with Daniels Incorporated of Garner being the contractor. We've approached them to find out what the cost would be, and they have provided us unit costs such that this work could be incorporated into that contract. The total cost for all four speed tables and signage would be approximately $20,900. So our recommendation would be for counsel to consider identifying a funding source for the Hunter's Mark project so that it can be incorporated into the resurfacing contract and authorize the town manager to execute change order number one with Daniels in the amount of $20,900. So we could bring that change order to you as soon as the next meeting in June, if not the first meeting in July, then have the town manager execute the contract. And we would expect that all the work could be completed by August. So that was all I had for the presentation. Wasn't sure if anybody from the HOA, we've got two members over here who have attended in case you did want to ask any questions.
Okay, we'll start with you first, Howard.
Sure.
And see if counsel has questions for you. And this is a, seems like a practical application of the, of the policy, and looks like it followed the set schedule that it was laid out to do, I guess. So counsel questions for our town engineer? Mr. Matthews, anything?
I think it was good. I think, and especially straight away is most important, with speeders coming into an area, so I think it's very reasonable.
Okay, Mr. Singletary, anything?
Mr. Matthews.
Okay, down here, Mr.?
No questions, but I, I agree.
All right, Mr. Dellinger? Okay. All right. I think that's sufficient. Just recognize folks from the HOA, unless you have something urgent you need to say. I think you see which way we're moving on this, right? Okay? All right. So thank you, Chris. So you have before you the consideration to approve the project, authorize staff to incorporate the work into the annual resurfacing contract, and you've heard the cost and when that comes back, probably on the consent agenda, I suppose. Okay. Motion's in order, or counsel?
I authorize, I moved authorize of funding for the traffic calming project in Hunter's Mark subdivision, Haywood River Street, and authorize the town manager to execute a change order to incorporate this work into the 2022 annual resurfacing contract with Daniels at a cost of $20,900.
Second.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Any other questions? Hearing none, if you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, no, and there is none. So thank you, and thanks to the neighborhood for working through the policy and getting accomplished what I hope you wanted to have done. So thank you all for your time. All right, we will move then to the next item under new and old business, which is item four. And this will be a presentation from Mr. Treesenberg, Spring Drive Town's recent middle time lapse waiver request.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Jeff Treesenberg, planning director. I don't have a whole lot to present to you other than to let you know that we did receive a official request per the ordinance that was submitted by the property owner, Mr. Lucas and Ms. Hamad, the potential buyer, to consider waiving the one-year waiting period on this particular piece of property. They have proposed some revisions to it and would like to discuss that with you all here this evening to see if you all would entertain that request to waive the one-year waiting
Just identify yourself by your name and address. We'd appreciate it.
Hey there, good evening. Rahab Hamid with Trial and Property. Thank you, Jeff, for the introduction. We appreciate the time this evening to be in front of you. And as Jeff mentioned, we are looking for the consideration for a time waiver so that we can bring this plan back for consideration in front of council. Some of the revisions that have been made are a 15% reduction in the units, as well as providing a little bit more open space. You can see some of the shading that's in between the townhome buildings that open up the plan from where it was previously presented. We also are going to be working with staff and if appropriate, with engineering regarding some traffic calming in the new plan. Happy to take any kind of questions you may have or any comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Behring, I'll start with you. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Mr. Singletary.
Mayor Dellinger.
Mr. Singletary.
Thank you. 15% reduction, it went from 59 to 51, right?
We're showing 50.
50, so from 59 to 50. Okay, and that's how the green space opened up so much is you took those units out of those pockets to show the, the green space a whole lot more clearly.
Correct. If you can take a look, there are some of the, the units or the buildings that are actually closest to the neighboring houses in the back, they were reduced so that some of the blocking could actually provide them some more open space for green.
Okay, Mr. Matthews, anything?
Big improvement than the one we've seen before. Like to put some thought into this one.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Vance?
Questions?
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
Yeah, I think it's vastly improved, and I think a lot of the feedbackers and council were going to give me trouble regardless of what we, I mean, if we decide to allow it, is that entrance on Timber, that exit, simply because I drive by it and I think about this project, I drive on Timber almost every day. And as I come around that kind of curve and try to imagine where that road's going to come out and where that sort of right turn into the school sort of is, I have a lot of concerns about the, it sort of being a blind spot for people coming around. Project requires two entrances that way, and I don't know if there'd be a way to incorporate one that could be services somewhere, but that, that's going to be my real issue if this, when this comes back now, or, you know, in a year or whenever. The danger of trying to make that right turn out of there with the traffic coming down Regardless of what happens tonight, that's, that's going to be a concern.
Okay, and of course, as you well know, Mr. Dellinger, this won't be the last opportunity to speak on the matter. The main issue before us tonight is whether or not we want to grant or deny the waiver. Ultimately decide how the project will come back. So at any rate, thank you. Mr. Vance, anything?
Questions?
Okay. Thank you very much. I believe that's all. Did I cover everybody? Yeah, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else who cared to speak on this matter? Okay. All right, counsel, if you have any further discussion at this time, now would be a good time for that. Again, I think as we stay focused on the, the basic request here is, is to grant the, grant the waiver. So a motion would be in order to that effect.
I think the applicant has listed to some of the issues we had, and I appreciate them doing that, opening up the green space to the, to the houses behind them, and reducing the units by nine. So I'll make a motion that the waiver be granted per section 3.6, 1.15 of the UDO, the request that was made to grant the waiver to allow the new, new project proposal to go through the planning department.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singletary. And motion's been properly seconded by Mr. Matthews and/or Ms. Behring, Mr. Matthews, I guess. So counsel, if you're ready to vote on the motion, if you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, no. Okay, there is none. So chair will declare that that's, motion has passed, and thank you, gentlemen, for your time. Still some work ahead, but we're moving. Thank you. I believe we're at item five, are we not? And Ms. Jody Miller will lead us at this time. Last item under new and old business, I believe. So Ms. Miller, I recognize you.
Good evening, mayors and members of council. I'm going to give you a brief recap of our discussion on May 31st regarding the recommended 22-23 budget, and then I'll allow counsel to ask any additional questions and continue your discussion on next year's budget. So I'm just going to go over a few slides that you've seen before. You have the whole slide deck that we shared with you on the 31st. Certainly, if you'd like to look at a particular slide, let me know when we could take a look at it again. But I wanted to highlight just a few slides to allow counsel to continue your conversations and deliberation on, on next year's budget. So first, looking at the effective tax impact comparison chart, this is something that we have looked at several times during your deliberations over next year's budget. Just giving you a sense as to where Garner is as far as our total, it's regarding taxes and fees, and where we rank regarding our other municipalities in Wake County. And although you see that we are at the top of the chart there with the lowest amount, we've had several conversations over this past budget season about how that may not be a good thing in that we're seeing our operating, a deficit in our operating budget due to those decreased general fund dollars. So we just wanted to recap that for you and... So, we just wanted to recap that for you and remind you of sort of where we are in comparison to our peers in Wake County. This was part of a conversation from the May 31 work session on the budget, the value of a penny, and what the value of a penny in Garner will generate as compared to some of our municipalities in Wake County, and wanted to share this specific information with you. You'll see Garner, when we look at the value of one penny, it generates just under $533,000, and we're towards the bottom of this particular list. But this was a point of discussion during our last budget discussion and wanted to provide the council with some additional information. You'll recall this slide from our last discussion as well. The council had asked staff to come back with some scenarios that looked, looked at in addition to the two cents tax increase that was already planned for next year's budget. What would it look like if it went up to three and a half cents, four cents, four and a half cents? What would the additional revenue generated amount be? And you can see from the chart provided here what those amounts would be. And then any recommendations for what that revenue would be used for. As council is aware, in order to balance next year's budget, we had to cut about $2.1 million in operating costs from the budget to, to balance it, even with that planned two cent increase. So, the budget team's recommendation would be any additional revenue or taxes that the council would approve, that we would take those revenue dollars and put them back into the operating budget or reinstate some of the services we've had to cut back on or cut, remove completely. And so, these would be things like being able to fully fund our mulch contract, looking at putting money back in our snow removal budget, which we had to zero out in order to balance next year's budget, look at putting more money back in our sidewalk maintenance program, and then also put more money back into staff travel and training opportunities. We also talked about any additional tax increase being exempt from the revenue savings plan, and it was the consensus of council to allow that to move forward with any additional taxes that may be approved for next year's budget. So, Mayor, I'm going to stop at this point. That was just a brief recap to help facilitate the continued conversation with the council this evening. Myself and the budget team are happy to answer any questions you may have, and certainly this is an opportunity for the council to continue your discussions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miller, and I'm sure there will be some other questions. I might just observe that the, what's on the screen now, I believe, the, the, the red area was sort of the, as I recall, where our discussion focused most in terms of increasing revenues through a tax increase. I believe I recall that the mayor had suggested the three and a half cents, and then we had further discussion, and so within that range is, is where it seemed that council was leaning at that time. So, I will give council an opportunity to make their own thoughts and observations on, so staff has brought back to us, I think, what we asked you to do. So, very good. I'll start with, with Ms. Behringer.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important for us to note that of this tax increase, that two cents was voted on by the public last fall with the bond referendum, and that was 80% approval, which is the highest approval rate we've had on any, I believe, historically on any bond referendum. So, the public got a chance to vote on two percent, excuse me, two cents. What we're really looking at now is how much above that that we need to add to the revenue stream to be able to meet our, our budget. But I, I think sometimes people are saying, you're raising the tax rate as a lump sum and not distinguishing that there are two separate issues here.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
That's a very good point. Thank you for pointing that out, and, and I think all officers probably had communications from the public out there and things, but on TV, and we were talking about a little bit earlier, that, again, with the growth that we are having here in Garner, everybody is coming, the emergency services we've got to provide for people, and we have a responsibility to do that. And so, it's, it is a tough decision. Keep in mind, I know that whatever we approve, I've got to pay it as well as everybody else on this, this board also. So, we're all a product of our actions. So, I just want to put that out there, that it's tough choices, but this is, running this town is a very big business, and we are growing. And, and as pointed out, new growth comes in, it takes a while for that to flow through the system, to realize that revenue off those new houses and people come in. So, it's, we're putting some money out front, waiting on the backside to come back in. So, thanks, it's important that the public know that. Thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
Yeah, I spent some of the weekend looking at numbers and, and, or his past numbers on population and future numbers on growth, and I, I can share this with council later. But in, in 2000, Garner's population was about 18,000 people. In 2020, it was just over 30. So, it took us 20 years to add 12,000 people. We will add that number of people by 20, between 2020 and 2025, we'll add at least that number of people. So, we're condensing 20 years of our past growth into the next five years. And just based on what we have approved here and at the staff level, conservatively, by 2030, if you spread all that development out evenly over those years, we come to a population of 53,000. Now, if we continue to approve at the rate we've been approving over the past few years, so that's just what we've already approved, if we continue to approve as we continue to grow and get new developments, 2030 will be closer to 60,000. And that's in the ground, people moved in. So, my kind of point is, and that's, again, assuming it's evenly distributed, I think we're going to grow a lot faster in the next three to four years, and that's a lot of growth. It's more growth than any of us have ever seen. And I think when it comes to raising revenue and getting ahead of it, you can always go into the future, you can look back in lower taxes and say, we overcorrected, or we overshot. But you, you can't go into the future and say, we should have done more. When you do that, you miss opportunities and years of revenue that you needed to cover growth and maintenance and miss, you'll miss economic development opportunities because you're shorthanded and short-staffed and short-funded. So, I think when we make the decision and have the conversation, we need to think in terms of making sure we are ahead of the curve and not behind the curve, because you just can't make up what you missed out on, playing catch-up. We're kind of right on the cusp of playing catch-up, but I think we're, we're in the right position right now to get where we need to be. So, I just want to, again, those population numbers are, are real numbers, and we need to look at what's ahead and be getting all the pieces in place to prepare for that, that growth and maintain our level of service delivery and staff growth and training, and also, again, open ourselves up to opportunities that come economic development-wise. So, those are just my thoughts, is to look, look forward and, and do what we need to do.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Vance?
Yes, I'd just like to say in reference to what, to add on to what's already been said, that the two penny increase, one part of that came because of the bond referendum, and this, and the two penny increase that we are looking at now, or possibly a little more, is, is necessary based upon all the information that's been placed before us. We are, we are definitely in a different place, growing much faster at this point in time, and the services to keep up with that is, is going to cost. And we're working diligently to try to, to stay as balanced as we can, but yet we still are demanding services. It's one thing not to be able to, to grow and not have the EMS able to properly provide the services because we did not do what we're doing now, is looking at how can we provide the, provide for the future growth. So, it's imperative that we, we do that, to include the fire and police and other areas, to make sure that we have the necessary services available for which the people will demand, are demanding, to, to, to properly serve the, the town of Garner. So, I just want to say and agree with what my fellow council members have said, that, that it is, we're looking at it critically and taking the necessary steps to make sure that everything is in place for proper and sustained growth.
Thanks, sir. To my left, Mr. Singleton?
Well, thanks, staff, for giving the information, the value of a penny raises. As I stated in my email back, when you look at the, the lowest four, lowest five, I'm sorry, when you look at the higher tax rates, just the tax rates are higher because the property is valued in southeastern Wake County and eastern Wake County at a lower rate than it is the other parts of Wake County. You know, Cary, Apex, Holly Springs has seen tremendous growth, and Worsell, a lot of that is due to the most valuable property in, in the Triangle area, and that's RTP. And so, that affects them from a standpoint of both commercial and residential value to their, their homes. I go back and seeing this picture, Mr. Beasley on our screen here, you see all night, to the story he told at our budget session about the same house, the same footprint on the same size lot by the same developer, which sold for $410,000 in Garner and $700,000 in Apex. And if you, the tax valuation by, by the Wake County would not be that price, you know. If the house was $300,000 in Garner at our tax rate and $500,000 in Apex, you would still pay slightly more tax to Apex than you would in Garner based off their tax rate and that value. But there's a tremendous difference in the tax rate between the two. I mean, there's 14 cent difference there, and that's because their, that property's valued higher. You know, if our property was valued at a higher tax rate, it wouldn't be 53.5321 cents. It wouldn't be close. But that's an issue that I know it's hard for people to understand, but that's, that's part of it, because again, as I said last week, the people that you hire, whether it's the planning staff, the assistant managers, the finance staff, the, the special projects, the engineering staff, the attorneys, police chief, the police firefighters, I mean, you know, we're all pulling from the same pool of people, and those salaries are comparable in Garner's, they are to all, all these other municipalities on here. So, it's, this is not fun. I know people, you know, we've got a couple snappy emails from people, and that's fine, I had no trouble with that, you know, asking us, what, what are we doing up here? Well, you know, this is not fun, and this is not games. We ain't doing it for the pay, I can tell you that. You know, Wake County's can give themselves a raise, however much it's going to be, but we ain't getting paid no $50,000 to do this job. We get paid about $7,300, last I checked. And so, we're not doing it for the pay.
That much?
I think it's around that area, yes. Now, don't, you know.
Yes, we digress.
Pardon?
I said, less we digress, yeah.
We had it several years ago one time, but anyway, I'm just stating the point, this is not fun stuff. I don't sit around and think this is, get a kick out of doing this. So, anyway, I, I, as I understand it, we'll have this on our next, our budget meeting on the 21st, excuse me, not our budget meeting, on our regular meeting on the 21st to vote on.
Yes, we'll prepare a budget ordinance for you to vote on, yes.
Matthews?
I'd just like to make a little comment, and Mr. Singleton is absolutely correct. This isn't fun. This is just a cost of doing business, and it's all essential business, you know, this isn't just fun projects. We're not giving ourselves potentially a $40,000 a year pay raise like Wake County's wanting to do with our tax increase. That's, in my opinion, that's not sound spending. It's not what you're elected to do. You're elected to represent the people and do the best you can. If we got into this for the sour, we'd all be broke, so, but we're going to spend this money wisely. It's needed. When issues come up, let us make mention, you want the red lights, you want the blue lights out there, you want your streets fixed, you want the services, you want water sewer and the parks and the things that make you move here. It's all essential dollars. I know the staff has picked it apart as much as they can to come up with these numbers, and we've got to do our part, and it's a tough decision, but we're not wasting this money, and it's most important our citizens understand that. We've thought about it long and hard, and we've cut where we can, and, and as mentioned, we've got a lot of growth coming, as Mr. Dellinger said, and those numbers are astonishing, but so true. So, that's just my comment, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Manager or Assistant Town Manager, I'm not sure how much we've at least put, put this out there in the public, but it seems reasonable to me to at least note the fact that on what we would label as some one-time expenditures, we are fortunate to have a sum of money that we haven't had in the past, I'm speaking of the ARP. Do either one of you care to, to mention how that's likely going to help us in this budget year?
Sure, I can start, and if you want to fill in the blanks there. So, we are recommending in this budget $400,000 to be used for one-time purchases, and basically those are associated with public safety. So, we have tasers that will be paid out over a number of years, and we have some, some SRT equipment that will be paid out over a number of years, and several other things in there. Did I have to look at the list, remember?
Well, you don't have to. Manager, I would add, so those, those equipment, public safety equipment, we had projected to use the forfeiture dollars that come through the police department to be able to replace or renew a lot of the public safety equipment. We have used some of the ARP dollars, about $400,000, for the town's perform list. That is our list of projects for our facilities and maintenance that we need to do. We have a long list of roofs that need to be repaired and HVAC systems that need to be replaced, that we really need to start and, and get a lot accomplished next year to make sure our facilities stay in good working order. We also, with the health insurance, using part of our health insurance rebate to help support the employee increase portion for dependent care that was included as well. So, there are opportunities to use one-time funding opportunities through the budget, and we've tried to use them strategically in order to really help us facilitate not only balancing next year's budget, but really moving forward on some of the priorities for the council.
Okay, thank, thank you for sharing that. I think that's worth mentioning and reminding us and the public of that, of that funding source that we haven't had in the past, and it'll be a one-time. Okay, anybody else comment or question?
Mr. Mayor, in regard, excuse me, in regard to what's Councilman Dellinger's observations, if we are not growing, we're dying. Or put it another way, if we're not going forward, we're going backward. There is no choice there as far as if we sit still and don't do anything, we won't go backward, we will. Tax increases are always an emotional issue as well as a financial issue, and I would like us to communicate to the public that we feel it, we feel it, and it's real, but we have to make a decision to go forward and not find ourselves going backwards. If we go backwards, we're not going to be the Garner that we all love.
And I'm reminded that, you know, there's some exciting things ahead, I realize, not trying to digress from, from revenues and the need to increase those, but, you know, we've got some, I think, some potentially wonderful park properties that excite me, and I think our citizens will be pleased to see the eventual build out of those. That's, that's, that's a very positive thing. Always needs for street and sidewalk improvements, I guess that never ends. But, so, there, there are a lot of practical things that are in this budget that, that are, that are needed, and I think the average citizen recognizes that for sure. So, you know, I, I think this council has done its best to try to strike a reasonable balance here, and I'm sure that's what they, they desire to do. So, having said that, anything else you want to add, Ms. Miller?
There's nothing specific, certainly happy to answer additional questions the council may have. From a standpoint of our next steps, we are asking to get direction from council regarding which rate you would like to be included in the budget ordinance so that we can prepare that for your June 21st meeting.
With the anticipation that the council... With the anticipation that council would vote to approve the budget at that time, barring any unusual obstacles or other items that might come up.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
I want to just thank staff for all the work they've put into the budget this year in our budget meeting and other meetings. I think you need guidance from us, and given the bond that's already there, and seeing that next year, we also have in the projections that you all have provided, another increase potentially next year, just built into the projections that we had previously, that my recommendation would be that this year we do the bond and then three cents, and then if we don't need the full projected increase next year, then we could take it off of that. But as my point goes, you can't go backwards and say we should have done a little more, but we can always go forward and say we didn't need as much of an increase as we thought we might. So my recommendation to the staff would be to take the bond increase and then the three, a three cents on top of that and come back with.
Okay, or stated in a different way, I assume, Mr. Dillinger, you're saying a five penny increase?
Yes.
I was thinking of a slight little number, but I'm not a voting member, but I'd be pleased to just interact with council on the matter. So anybody else care to speak to what I sort of call the bottom line issue here in terms of the rate to give to staff to bring back the final budget document? Anybody else?
We're looking at this three and a half window, the four, the 450, is that what, I know that was.
Well, yeah, obviously.
Numbers presented to us, yes.
Obviously, we're not bound by that. I mean, it shows what, you know, five, five and a half, and six would generate. But yeah, that was sort of the, I think, the initial focus, at least coming out of the last discussion, as I recall. Started at three and a half, at least I did, and went from there.
I would like to propose the 4%. Rather not have to do it at all, but I think that five is.
Okay, a couple of council members have mentioned two different figures there. We'll need a motion here in a few minutes, but I'll give any other council members an opportunity to weigh in on the proposal before you, staff has given to you.
Well, I've talked to a lot of folks over, it seems like every day on this issue, either in person or what have you, and some numbers we're looking at, and what would, in a great world, I'd like to do, but what we can get by with and taking into consideration, I can go along with the four at this time.
All right. Any other council members care to weigh in?
I would just say that to look at a four penny increase is uneasy, but I can work with that, agree with that four penny increase.
I can, I think we touched last week on a four cent was mentioned, and as of right now, that's something I would most likely consider, yes. I appreciate what Mr. Dillinger stated, because he talked about that last week with him. I just look at what we've, I just think the four, you know, I know people upstate in Wake County is talking about a raise, and I'm not on the county commissioners, we have to take care of Garner, and I know the county has to take care of the county in whole, one and a half cent increase there. So I believe I can consider the four cent increase. And have to remember, some of it's in the bond referendum, but, you know, we did agree to build Station Number Five in, working with Wake County, which will have fire and EMS. Chief Poole's here, we have 15 new firefighters that'll be there, they'll be, go through the hiring process, I believe, they'll be funded for 10 months, and then if the station, the bid goes out this summer, and if it opens in the fall of 2023, which I think is the plan, then they'll move right in there, and there'll be additional coverage for our first responders and fire and Wake County EMS out of that facility. Something else we've got to come up with is the bond referendum was $6.5 million. Well, our projected cost right now is 7.2. I bet when it's bid, it will be higher than that. So we're gonna have a million dollar gap to come up with, and you can't take it from other bonds, because that's not the way it works. We can take other, you know, the road money, because there was road money approved from Jones Sausage Road, that can happen, but there's only one facility bond. We can't take money from the sidewalks and put it to the fire department, so we're gonna have to come up with a million dollars, and it may be that one-time funding that we may have to use in that particular instance. We don't know yet till the bids go out, but I just hope that Wake County stays on schedule with that project and that it doesn't fall behind, and all of a sudden, Chief Poole's gotta stick 15 firefighters somewhere. I know he's got a plan, he's told us about it, but I hope it moves forward because of the level of service they want out in that area, especially when 540 opens, to, because the Garner Fire Department not only serves inside the town limits, but also they contract outside of the county, so some people don't realize that.
Okay, I think council's had a chance to weigh in, but I'll see if staff has any other sort of wrap-up or closing information you want to share at this time. Thank you, Joe, for leading us in that.
Mayor, just to make sure that we're clear on the staff side, we're going to prepare the budget ordinance with a four cent increase for next year, two which was planned as part of the bond, projects and referendum, and then two additional cents for the additional, almost additional million dollars of revenue, which will then used to reinstate some of the operating cuts that we had to propose in next year's budget. So things like being able to increase the mulching contract, being able to do more sidewalk maintenance, being able to make sure we have money for snow removal in case we have winter weather next year. Those are the kind of things that we'll be looking at, including back in next year's budget with that additional revenue. Is that correct?
I think it is, even though I was gonna potentially ask for a motion, council, if they'd rather vote. I think my sense is that most of the council seems to favor the four penny increase.
We'll have a chance to vote in two weeks. I think the guidance has been at this four cent from everyone, and Mr. Dillinger suggested five, but I think that's where we're kind of heading.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'll say, if we ignore, if we pretend we didn't have the two cent bond, and we were sitting here looking at just operations, two cent would not be enough. So forget the two cents that the bond, that's there for the bond, and let's just look at the budget and the growth of the town that's gonna grow by 30% in five years. A two cent increase is not enough. It's just by the numbers, and if it's, if it is, then great, but it's not. And we'll go into budget next year, and we'll do, we'll have to do, not the three and a half that's there, we'll have to do four, because we're digging ourselves in this hole. We've had multiple budget cycles, I've been on here multiple times, and we're not where we need to be, and our growth rate is going higher and faster, and like I said, I'd rather overcorrect than find out we didn't do enough. So.
I guess, okay, I hear you. I would just observe that, obviously, if we had not had a bond referendum and informed citizens that there would be the increase, then perhaps the way we would look at our needs otherwise might change, but certainly that is a factor. And so I think all of council is trying to put those two together and come up with a reasonable amount. Nobody is indicating that, you know, it'll meet every single need we have, probably never will, but at any rate, I hear your, I hear your passion, but I believe there is consensus around, at this point, the four penny increase, and so I think that's a reasonable scenario for the council to bring back, so we can get this budget into a place where we can do what the law requires, and that is pass the budget before the end of the fiscal year. At this point, this is, I guess, not an official public meeting, but I guess it could be. If a member of the audience would like to address the council, I guess it's up to the chair to decide if that would be okay, public hearing. Mr. Rex, do you come forward if you don't mind? State your name and address, if you don't mind, sir.
Rex Whaley, 102 Pine Way Street. I was here before, and just a couple of things, and I don't envy the position y'all are in, and you know, I was here before, I said, tax increases in that, I know, you know, the things y'all have to do. One comment I would make as far as this budget process, you know, the public comment period was cut off, I think, like the 20th, and when I came before, it was to talk about the proposed budget, which had a two cent, and then it went beyond that. So maybe in the future, just think about allowing more public comment beyond, I mean, because the comments would change whether it's two cent or four cent, but, so that's just a process issue. The other thing, since I've heard this, and it's helped me to come down and hear it, because I know the challenges y'all are facing, so as I said then, and I think even stronger now, I understand what you're up against and, you know, the need for an increase. Two things I just wanted to mention, I'll be brief, I know everybody's ready to go home. If y'all could clarify two things for me. One, when we're talking about this increase, we keep talking about the bond that was passed, the 69 million, and the two cents that the voters approved. So I'm not clear whether the increases we're talking about here, I took that back then, I mean, the two cent was actually serviced the bond debt, and then there's a different issue about needing some operating money that goes with the bonds. So just to maybe clarify, so if you come back later, is the two cents that's part of this four cent, is that the two cents the voters approved, I guess, to serve the debt, or is this the two cents, I think we've referenced, like to staff, the fire station five, the things, because to me, they're two different things as to what was approved there. So I'm not sure which way y'all are working that two cents into this factor, into the increase. The other thing I would mention is you're excluding the increased tax from the Revenue Savings Program, which is a whole nother issue, but my understanding was the cost of the bonds was like 7.72 cents, and so this Revenue Savings Program was supposed to pick up the balance. So I'm a little concerned about the mechanism we're gonna use to get money into the savings plan to service that debt, because to me, the five cent out of 772, if you're talking about just servicing the debt, two cent was coming from the voter approved, five cent from the savings plan, well, that's around $50 million worth of the bonds that has to be paid. So I'm not sure, as y'all are trying to think ahead, like Councilman saying, you know, how does that factor into these revenues you're looking at in the future? It's how you're gonna get the money into the savings plan as part of the bond package. So this is the clarification about the two cents you're approving tonight to make sure which you're talking about, is it the operational side or the debt side? And then I think there needs to be discussion about how you're gonna fund the savings plan to meet that part of the debt, because I understood when the 23 budget that was recommended, it wasn't including the two cent for the bond debt, you know, it said it was to meet core operational needs. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
I think you were pretty much on the right track. I might ask either the town manager or assistant manager if you want to comment on that and maybe clarify.
Right now, fill in this time.
So the planned two cents for the bond debt service was planned for next year's budget, but due to some timing issues, we were able to actually push that out a little bit further than to next fiscal year. At the same time, we learned that we needed to bring in our 15 firefighters for Station Five earlier, 10 months earlier, in order to get them through the fire academy for training. So essentially, what had been planned for the two cent for debt service for next year ends up supporting the additional operating costs that we need for next year, and it is already built into the budget for the following fiscal year to make sure we have enough to cover the debt service for the approved bond projects. Regarding the second question on the Revenue Savings Plan, there is dollars set aside in next year's budget to cover any debt service that we would need for those projects, and as we've talked about, one of the challenges with the Revenue Savings Plan is that although it allows us to pay our debt service payments, it does sometimes reduce our operating dollars. So for things that are ongoing, for maintenance, additional cost, higher cost for inflation and those kinds of things, we need to take a look at the Revenue Savings Plan and come back to the council with some options and some recommendations about how do we look at the Revenue Savings Plan and make sure that we're continuing to build that account to pay for those bond projects and that debt service for our capital projects, but also making sure we keep enough in the general fund that we're supporting the operating dollars that we need. And we've, as we mentioned at the last meeting, we plan to bring back some recommendations to the council in the fall regarding Revenue Savings Plan. Mr. Manager, would you add anything to that?
I think you covered it very well.
Say one thing, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Whaley raised a question about funding the plan in the future. Our financial consultant, Davenport, which we've used for several years, and they are excellent, they give us a book a couple of times a year about this thick that has dozens and dozens and dozens of charts with all kinds of scenarios, and if you do this, if you do that, if interest rates go up, and so they have it projected out, you know, how much money the Revenue Savings Plan will, what the amount will be, then when you're gonna start paying debt service, how it draws it down, but over time, as long as you commit to doing that, it will pay all your capital costs. It'll pay the 69 million dollars that was approved plus interest. So we rely on them for their expertise, and they'll be a part of this process in the fall, because they'll lay out all these scenarios, and the book is, it's interesting reading because of the amount of scenarios they lay out. I mean, if you give them a half dozen scenarios, they'll tell you everything from good to bad. And so that's very helpful to rely on them for their level of expertise, because it makes the complexity of dealing with paying this money back, and then plus the operational issue, that their assistance is greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Whaley. I knew these others could probably explain that better than I could, so I think they've done that. Just a side issue, and I'm not trying to sound smarty here, but Mr. Whaley there is one of our citizens who makes good use of our sidewalks and areas out there. I don't know how many of you know, but he's a regular runner, I see him almost daily when I'm out some, and so he's one citizens taking advantage of our sidewalk system anyway, and other trails in the park stuff. Okay, go ahead.
And I appreciate that, as I said before, we want parks and everything, and I am a big user, so very supportive of what we need to do, and I appreciate the clarification on the two cent, that it's like you're doing it early and you can handle some of the operational costs. I just didn't want there to be an issue later where somebody said, well, you, you know, you've already approved the two cent or whatever, so, but thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, sir, thank you. Okay, anything else from anyone? Go ahead.
Mayor, if I could, I would just like to thank the budget team for all the hard work and the way they put the budget together. I know we were without a budget manager this year, and so the team came together and, you know, as well as the department heads, and made some very difficult choices and, you know, came to you with the balanced budget as we're required to, but it was, it was very difficult and took a lot of conversation, a lot of sacrifice on behalf of the departments. You see a lot of cuts that were made. We thank you for considering the additional two cent and force, with the four cent total that will maybe allow us to put some of those things back in the budget, but I just want to thank Ms. Miller, Mr. Hodges, Mr. Beck back there, Mari, Ms. Howell, and everybody else that worked hard to get this budget to you and make these difficult decisions and keeping me straight when I get all the numbers jumbled up. We've all looked at these numbers so many different times, you know, sometimes get confused. But anyway, just took a really big team effort, and so I want to just thank them publicly for all the hard work, and hopefully I didn't leave anybody out, but thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mr. Manager, and confession I will make, yeah, the numbers And a confession I will make, yeah, the numbers, when I think I have them pretty well pinned down, I brought the manager into my office today, and I said, "Mr. Manager, here's some budget matters you got to talk with me about and help me understand." And he did a good job doing that. So it's a big thing. One of the most important things that the council does all year, obviously, is passing a budget. It packs everybody in our town, no doubt about that. I know it's at the nine o'clock hour. If we're finished with this, I'm going to suggest we take a fairly quick recess and come back and finish up with manager reports and council reports. So is there anything else on the budget before we go?
I want to thank Mr. Whaley for coming for the last three meetings. He's well informed. I mean, I can tell you know what you're talking about, the research you've done back to, I think, the 2014, when you said you were looking at budgets. It's nice to have someone who's involved and who's been trying to learn and got good questions.
Well, yeah, somebody said one time before, where you stand on the position depends on where you sit. And I'm sitting on the outside looking in, and you are on the inside looking out. So I'm just trying to bring you a perspective from somebody just sitting out there gathering bits and pieces. And so anyway.
Well-stated. Thank you. Thank you for sitting on that side and bringing the information in, for sure.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add a compliment to Mr. Whaley, too. He reminds me of advice I used to get from my dad a long time ago, and that was very simply, "If you don't vote, don't complain." So you are obviously not voting and not complaining either.
There are two cents for us.
Yeah. Maybe you're four cents worth, aren't you?
Oh, boy. Okay, that's enough.
All right, you have what you need, Ms. Miller. Anything else from council?
Yes, Mayor. And just one, just real quickly, I put the schedule up one more time. We are now to the bottom of our schedule. If you remember, when we started this process back in February, we're now down to June. And so we will prepare the budget ordinance based on the guidance that we've received from the council this evening, and it will be on your agenda for the 21st. Thank you.
We would anticipate finalizing it through a vote on the 21st.
We'll ask council to take action on that ordinance on the 21st.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all. So, all right, it's been a good discussion. Thank you, council. I respect your various thoughts and opinions, and thank you for weighing in. Mr. Whaley, good to hear from you as well. I'm going to call a, let's do about a 10-minute recess and come back and finish the agenda. I'm going to call a, let's do about a 10-minute recess and come back and finish the agenda.